Following me to your order at seven o'clock, please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty as its own accord.
Do we have any changes or additions to the agenda?
I have none.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Consent agenda?
All right, you have the minutes from our last meeting, September 25th, and then you have the receivables and payable. Just wanted to point out a couple of the payables. The last page of the payables, you'll see that we have a check forward to the Wasika County Highway Department for $86,000. That is the city portion of the two projects that we did with them this summer. ISG, we are paying for that concept plan that they are writing for the community center, so that's the partial payment for that. Andrea, do you have anything?
Well, on the payable side, if you have one payable to add here, it's USG and there's a vendor that are for AMI metering. And some of you may recall that for the water portion, it was split between water fund and sewer fund, they were the water meters. This stuff helps to recollect their revenue based off the water meters. And so this is the, they broke it out in between two years for those payments. So our first year was last year in '22, perhaps was the payment. And so now this year is our last and final payment for the water side. So the sewer fund, that will be $114,395 to get added to tonight's payable. I didn't have anything else on the payable side unless someone had a question. I did want to point out on the revenue side, we did receive state aid this year, and that was directly about $43,000 we got last week. And then as well as back into the revolving loan fund, Fund 202, the location of state time that loan was paid off, they have more locations. And that was directly $18,000, that and back into that one.
Motion to approve. Consent agenda?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Public forum, anyone here to speak through public forum? Public forum? Notice of communications.
You have a letter from resident Reenimchek in your packet here tonight.
Assume everybody's read the letter. Any discussion on it?
What's that?
Any discussion on the letter? Go ahead.
I've thought about this quite some time, from the first time that we talked about it until now. And I do believe that she missed the nuance of our whole decision. She, it may look cute, and some people may have told her that it looks good. However, this is a public building. It's managed by the elected officials and the employed individuals for the city. And from what I read here and what I've learned, or not learned, is no one had permission to do this. Therefore, if you paint or put something on a public building, if you don't have permission, it's called graffiti. Much like downtown Minneapolis, if people were painting the overpasses and painted, painting the walls by the freeway, it was graffiti until they accepted it by the council, and then it became street art. This is graffiti unless they had permission to do it. Now, I think that unless they want to come forward and talk to us about it, and unless they had permission from some public organization. The other aspect is, this is a historical building, and to change the appearance or the look of this building, it should be a public discussion, not an individual or small group of individuals. Therefore, I'm saying that they missed the whole nuance of why this was disturbing to people. Whether it's cute or not, or whether it's something that will enhance people coming into the library or not, is not the question. The question is, was there permission? And it's a public building, and it's a historical public building. If you didn't have permission, it's graffiti.
I couldn't agree more. I think that there was a lack of information to the people. The public didn't really understand why we said that, no, they can't be painted anymore. And I think that might be the confusion with a lot of people, is that they're just misinformed, don't have the whole story.
I had discussion earlier today with Dave Alman, and this may have classified as vandalism had it been reported early, you know, just painting over a public building without approval. And it could have been a punishable offense. Because we didn't report it, nothing will happen.
Well, I think that, where it may be true, that may be a little extreme. I mean, it was done with good intentions, I think. But more or less, after discussion, I think we're going to stick with our original plan of having that taken care of, and I believe Clinton is reaching out to somebody to take care of that.
Yes, sir.
We talked last week, so.
Sorry, it's quite a long spiel, but I was pretty adamant in my thoughts about this.
On the council reports.
Golf eyes rewards meeting Wednesday. I will not be present. But I believe we're going over some bids for the Roughmore.
I'll probably attend the meeting, so.
Thank you.
Had a meeting with Park Road. The video cameras are installed, and the next update they're probably looking at for something in that building other than the elevator is IT, getting their internet speeds up and having... A lot of the tenants have their own source of internet, and we'd like to get the building on a system. So that it would simplify a lot of things, and we don't have 200 different wires running around the building. So something that... I know Rita would like to upgrade her system in her office, and she may be talking to Clinton about that, if they can work something to use the system that the city already owns.
Anything?
We did, we, the park board didn't meet two weeks last month. However, I see that the city park equipment, it looks like a lot of it's in. Hopefully, it can get done in the next two or three weeks. That'd be nice. Should look really good when they get done, but anyway, we haven't met.
The public utilities met tonight before this meeting. We had our presentation on the new rate study. We are looking at a possible increase over the next few years to help cover some of our upcoming costs. With the rate study, it still shows us we're going to be below the median for the, they had 89 cities in their rate study, and we're still going to be below the median for that, even with our proposed increases, so that's exciting. They started on the electric meters just last week. Haven't gotten super far, but they're starting to move through it. They're going to be flushing hydrants the week of the 16th, so if you have some rusty water, call Clinton at home at night.
5:07.
Other than that, we talked a little bit about the investment options, which we're going to touch on during business, so we can wait on that one. Did I miss anything, Andrea?
Good job, Andy.
Administrator report.
Yes, let me get that up. In the packet tonight, we have the September statement from the bank, the reconciliation. You also have the cash balance report dated last Friday, October 6th. You have the comparisons for the golf course. I have some good news for you. Last meeting, we adopted the preliminary levy that had an 8.4% increase. Andrew and I were going through a few things here last week. I overestimated one line item in the budget, so we were actually able to take some money out of that. And then we fixed up one of our debt service levies. So actually, right now, as we speak, the increase is 4.6% instead of 8.4. And what I would suggest is we stick with that now, because we will find out probably in the next couple of weeks what our insurance will be.
Our insurance numbers will be.
Then we'll have final numbers with that. So that's good. One thing I want the council to consider, you don't have to make your mind up tonight or next month by any means, but the planning commission needs to start meeting regularly, because we have some various things that they need to, that they need to meet about. So I was going to suggest that the planning commission meet on the fourth Monday of the month at 7:00 PM. And that the city council, rather than meeting twice a month, you could meet once a month, which would be that second Monday at 7:00. The main reason I say that is because, you know, if the planning commission does meet in the evening, we have to kind of, this building gets kind of full with some night meetings, so we have to kind of be careful how we do that. But then, secondly, I guess probably more important is, I've noticed the last, what, six, seven months, our council meetings have lasted a half hour, 40 minutes? If we meet once a month for an hour, hour and a half, I think that'd be okay, wouldn't it? Okay, so just think about it, and we can...
We'll think about it, we'll get it on the agenda.
Yep.
Some point closer to the end of the year.
Is that for like the whole year of 2024, or just until?
Yeah, give it a shot, see how it goes.
See how it goes. We can always change it, but.
Yep.
One thing I would suggest, Clinton, is changing when the community center meeting is. We meet about 10 days after EDA, and we're supposed to be reporting to the EDA, so we need to wait approximately three weeks before we can get back to them.
Yeah.
Seems like a long time.
Sure. The other thing I have here, Jason Moran is usually present when we have my performance review. He is available on Monday, November 13th, so if the city council is okay, I'll schedule the performance review for that evening.
And that'll be after the council meeting?
Yeah, it'll be towards the end of the council meeting. Yep, yep. The only other thing I have is the brief from the Coalition of Minnesota Cities is in there. And then I was going to mention, I will not be here Friday or Monday. So you can call if you need anything, but I just, I'll be uptown, trying to find pheasants. Keep working, trying.
Motion to approve administrator report.
All in favor?
Aye.
For department heads, Chad, since you're here, how's the fire department doing? How'd the pancake feed?
Worked pretty good. Still looking for, obviously, new members. We're working on that for the year. And we give out a few applications on Sunday. Few of them seem interested, but that's our next hurdle, I guess. New job, still on schedule, it'll be your fourth first year, but Chad hasn't shown up yet, so we'll see what happens.
Cap?
How short are you on people? Three?
Four, is that why?
Four.
But there's a half a dozen that could go anytime they wanted to?
Yep, I understand, yep. But right now, you're down four.
Okay. Home business number one, the police chief opening schedule.
Yeah, the Personnel Committee met last week, and they came up with five items that they would like the city council to talk tonight about regarding the recruitment and the opening for the, for the police chief position. How do you want, you two, how do you want to do this? One by one, or what?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay. Attached is the proposed schedule. The first item, the second item, we're on the second item right now tonight. This week, if you approve the ad that's in this packet here, Dave and I will work on getting that ad out. I do want the city council to decide or determine how you want the job advertisement to go. You want us to post it with the league, which is free, definitely the post board, the local newspaper, thinking anything else? Do you want to, to start with, do you want to place the ad out there?
I would say yes.
See what's all available, we got heard.
Is there a professional publication that police officers or chiefs are involved?
Post board.
The post board? And that, that would be where you're thinking, posting it?
Yep, and then, and Dave suggested the Police Chiefs Association as well. He can send the, send the word out there.
Right. Sheriff's Association, in case there's any law enforcement county people that might be interested in something like this, they would be a good bank of candidates?
I'll call Sheriff Dulas, see if he can help with that. Also attached to the job description, which was, you know, updated last summer with all of the other job descriptions that we did. The fourth item, the initial interview committee. The committee suggests that it consists of Andy and Andy from the Personnel Committee, a representative from JWP. Sheriff Dulas said he would be more than happy to sit on that. And then if we had a representative from the council of governments, they've been helping me a little bit here so far, they said that they'd be willing to come here as well. And if we need to, or if we decide that we have a second round interview, we could have the whole city council do the interview then, if that committee recommends that. So like I put in my memo here, it might look like kind of an aggressive schedule, but I think it's, I think it's manageable. We can, we can make, make do with this. I do want to point out one item in 10 on the schedule. After the interviews are made and we find our finalists that we're going to select, we would offer the conditional job offer, and then at that point, we would do the psychological exam and also the physical exam. I did not put physical on this one, but it would be psychological and physical. And last but not least, the committee also talked about this. Dave's retiring November 30th, and as you can tell with the schedule, we, we won't have one in place at that time, so the committee recommends that we have Sergeant Johnson act as acting chief effective December 1st. We should probably ask him if he's okay with...
Sergeant Johnson, okay with that? And we did, what was our discussion on the, we did a discussion on the pay on that too, didn't we, just like we did from the?
Yeah, maybe, let's have the Personnel Committee get together again, and we can...
Yeah, we can obviously compensate for that, so.
Yep. Are there any questions with this process?
Do you want a motion then to move forward with that, Clint?
Yes, sir.
Motion to move forward with review and recruitment of the new police chief.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
401. Safe routes to school cooperative agreement?
Yes, in your packet is the cooperative agreement that the county engineer sent, sent to me. Basically, since we are under population 5,000, the county needs to open the bids, award the bids, sign the contract with the, with the contractor. So the county is going to open bids on Thursday, and then the county board meeting next Tuesday, I'll attend, which they will be approving those bids and also approving this agreement. And the engineer, Jim, asked me if we could get this signed tonight, you know, prior to the county board meeting. Basically, this agreement states that, you know, the county is, is going to run the program, but the city has their engineer inspecting on site during the project. And as far as the grant money and all that goes, the county will pay the contractor, the county will contact the state to get the grant money, and it'll come to them, and then they will bill the city probably monthly for the local portion at the school and city.
Had agreed to split through.
Yep, had agreed to.
Been a long time ago, but I do remember the agreement.
Any questions about that?
Motion to approve cooperative agreement?
I have a question. This agreement doesn't cover JWP at all, and it's my understanding, all of recent earth, the agreements were all agreed to before I came on the board. So I guess I'd like to know if this here is a signed agreement someplace between JWP...
We have one, yes, from, prior to you being on here, we had a...
Because this one's just us and the county, the other one is us and the school.
And through school board meetings and city council minutes and all that, we have that.
We're basically, the agreement is we are splitting the local portion of the school 50/50.
Well, not 50/50, but...
Full-sto, whatever it was. What was our local portion again?
Us 65, the school, I think, 40, 45? Can't remember top of my head.
Yeah, but the, the bill now is in excess of that, correct? Well, we don't know, because they haven't opened the bid.
Right, right.
All right.
Anything else?
I have nothing else on that. Andy, you made a motion?
Yep.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Funding for stray feral cats. Do we have someone here to speak tonight?
Yes, yes, they've been asked to, they asked me placed back on the agenda so we can discuss the city helping with, with the spaying and neutering of, and I'm going to say stray and feral, right? Because technically, there's a difference.
Okay, well, as of September 15th through the 20th, we did manage to live trap 19 cats. 14 were spayed and neutered, and five were actually babies, kind of like three or four months and younger. That got put into foster care, so they're going to be able to be adopted out. But when it comes to the spay and muters, females, it's $135, males, it's $115, and that includes a rabies vaccination, and it's a temper. And unfortunately, I don't know if it was September 21st when we had the clinic, benches no longer have a vet, and they were actually the more, less expensive option. So now we're trying to figure out how we're going to be able to get more cats done and be able to solo them during the winter. I do have somebody who volunteered office space in their business for during the winter, because during the winter, you have to hold on to them for a longer period of time before you can release them. So somebody volunteered some office space, so we'll have a place to keep them until they can be released. But we're kind of hoping that the city would help with about $40 per cat.
Side note, there's, I'm fairly sure Bench has hired a veterinarian last week.
They did?
I'm pretty sure. I know they were something out to the guy, Nicklet, and I think they hired somebody last week.
That would be fantastic.
I went out to dinner with Troy last week, him and I were talking about it, it's the only reason I know it, but you may want to check back on it, because I think they hired someone.
Okay. All the ones that we did get, we started on North Teal Street. Sorry.
I was a veterinarian today, talking with the CEO, and I think Troy is considering doing one for me, just coming in, but he wouldn't do the spaying, just like we were doing the floor through, the rescue and stuff, but I do have a lead, we drive from Wilmer, and we just wait for a response.
Cap?
And plus, I'm going to go up to the incident every month, so that we can get and just track them.
Did you say Wilmer, as in two hours away?
Yeah, well, it's an hour and thirty minutes.
Clinton goes that way, we could fill his truck with cats.
But I already told you, I'm not sure if I have a way of regressing on them, so having me out is sort of, it's not an option, otherwise I do have one for a month, so I'm going to go up, and it wouldn't just be Jamie going to have, I usually take between 10 or 20 cats, so I'm hearing.
Okay. I didn't mean to interrupt you, sorry.
Well, like I said, we started on North Teal Street, and hopefully, we're, we put a dent in it. But another area that we have really noticed, just because I live on Westell Street, is Oak Street, and I'm not sure what the name of the streets are that go into the trailer park, but there are a lot, and we can't get ahold of the management. And I don't know if it's going to be popular, but I was thinking about going door to door and asking if they, the residents with the area, or do I have to, I have to find out if I have to get management approval for it too? But there's three big areas that we wanted to concentrate on, and North Teal Street, and I believe it's East Second.
I had a trap last year on East Second.
Yeah.
From President Jim Paul, who, we helped pay the owners, because they claim all the money that they need, but these other people aren't claiming, so nor do they want to put money towards the child. And I do, like, I have a grant through my community, but our nonprofit will put 25 cats, and do transportation.
So you're asking the city to basically fund $40 a cat?
Yes.
Is there a limit here on these cats, or? And I don't know that I agree with some open-ended like that, but...
I guess, I don't know how this would work, but like the, the ones that can actually be adopted out, maybe not. Because there are some of them that, if they get worked with, they probably wouldn't have to be re-released. But some of them, there's not a choice, unfortunately. I don't know, what do you think on that? No, about the ones that can be adopted out.
They're friendly, you know, but right now, a lot of shelters are full, you know, they have to lock the vet, so the shelters are full. But I never hear about it, as long as I have this baby or, you know, a cat that they can adopt out and go to their nonprofit. Can I ask, I don't know for much, Dr. Troy, is he spaying cats, or is he just like the impound, you get the cat?
As far as Ray does for the city?
Yeah.
Just the impounding?
Just the impounding.
Are you asking to be able to come back on a monthly basis, or? Are you asking to be able to come back on a monthly basis, or quarterly or something to do this?
We do, we do do it quarterly, and I can tell you what we've done. I always like to do a limit, but I need to quit, so I give them all, so it's going to be one that yours to do. And what we do is here too, most, almost all the cats once they're adoptable. So that's how we get to other spay and muters. But it's kind of hard to figure that out, because they come after this at once, you know, I think I started in March here at Jingle, and I'm not asking to go back to March, so I need them, to my memory, and I've got their full on my cats, so give them the cat, like every other. The way to control the population, is we know?
So a lot of that $1,600 in our budget, how much do you envision we'll need to keep for?
It's always tough to predict what impoundment's going to be.
The last two years, we've either met the budgeted line at a market, so I anticipate.
It's going to be one of those, yeah.
On the left, I hear it's a little bit of that. You know, any amount is better than no amount, so that's something if you want to consider.
Well, I guess whatever the council considers, I think we should consider a flat dollar amount, not an amount per cat. That's just my opinion.
And I have to check with Dr. Troy, if I bet, and if he couldn't do it near the cost of spaying or anything, but, I do find?
I mean, could we throw $500 at it, or? Well, we certainly can, I just kind of cared for where we're going to get the 500. Or more, I mean, I guess I'm not opposed to it, we just have to figure out from a budgeting aspect where we're going to come up with the money. Would the option be the one along, or?
It would be out of the general fund, yeah.
I have a question. So when we put them away, we put aside this money for impounding, what does that entail? If an animal's out and about, it gets impounded?
Yep.
If that's somebody's animal, though, they pay to get their dog out of impound?
But we're charged from a vet clinic for that initial overnight stay?
The boarding fee.
The boarding fee.
You're charged.
And how much is that? Because I know my dog got loose, and I had to pay Troy a lot of money to get my dog out for being impounded. So where does that money then go? Nothing comes back to the city for?
Nope.
That?
City of Manquego, if I bring a feral cat in, because we're part of the impound in Manquego, our thing, and especially the feral, we get up to $30 a cat, just to take it and do whatever. I usually stay in there and release them. You know, once it's been impounded, that's, like your money goes to Troy, then it's, I understand.
Yeah, okay.
Because that's what, that should have been a profit, that money, because there's a caretaker in the house.
Okay.
You, out of that, there you would pay $25 to save for the impound.
Okay. So then the rest of it is charged from Troy?
The rest of it is charged from Troy, but I mean, if you weren't, if a resident weren't to pick up an animal or if it's a stray, then that's what they charge us.
Yep.
Okay, got you. Thank you.
And then either you can ice or try to adopt it.
Right. Do we know what's left right now in the impound?
$1,600 is left.
Is left for the year?
Yep. Dee? Yes, you may.
I'm just, I just came to numbers and I'm, I'm just, presentation, and I, and I don't know, it seems logical to me that efforts put towards spay and neuter feral cats will mean that there are fewer impounds next year.
Should.
And, that's, that's just farmer logic, but I think from the city council end, it would make some sense that this is a preventative and an overall cost saving for impound. If you regularly use all the impound money and even go over putting some dollars toward prevention, makes some sense in my mind, but that, of course, would be a council decision. But I, I just wanted to?
No, I understand what you're saying, it may save money in the long run, more or less.
And decreasing owners of kittens. Yeah, I mean, I have a cat, she stays in the house, but I see plenty of, plenty of feral cats even around me, and I, since I was here last time when we presented, I've been watching, like, holy cow, there are a lot of cats in Jingle. And I love kittens, I love them, but it's cruel if they're, if they're not cared for and if they're not healthy.
So, I don't really know, there's a community cat, a feral cat, and an abandoned cat, it's my category, but they even have like two to three a year.
You can't imagine if they each, you know, benefits, and the little kids coming to eat at six months.
It's just a vicious cycle, so. That's why we do, you know, not available, especially the numbers down on CTO. Because I trapped there a few years ago, now I'm just letting you know, it just seems awful again, but therefore, I always ask people when I need them and educate them to call me, you know, but this person's not calling me, and it just got out of control with them, so.
You trapped 19 of them already, is that what you said?
And some of them, we, I don't really responsible if I can leave home on them, you know, because a lot of times, well, he's a spaying, so not all of them are being, I get only two fillings, quarterly, whatever month you decide, that helps you know when you budget. Doesn't matter what, we're going to try to do it, so.
You're going to try and deal with it regardless of what we do here today?
I've been doing it for, you know, about two years, for one person, then another person called me, it's kind of word of mouth, because we don't have to advertise, and we're nonprofit, and nobody says, please do what we do. So it's more of a non community, like these, you know, these cats were not sick, they don't have dead kittens hanging around, there's no dead cats in the earth, it's good to develop, we don't breed. An average feral or community cat with their weather and being exposed to traffic, it's nice to have them in their own place. There are good roads, you know, if they help the roads, I've seen quite a few on the elevators too, and what street that's called over here, they always kind of take, they don't want a stray cat, and they kind of watch, because there's a little more, and there's many. And if this was something you guys need to think about, and you want to call that work, you want to respond?
I don't think $500 is going to put much, if Dan did it, they did 19, at $40 a cat, that's $1,160.
They didn't do all 19, because five were kittens.
14 were spayed and neutered.
Yeah, 14 times $40 is 560.
Well, where do you want to take it from? I'm open to suggestions.
We would still code it to that line item, that line item would just potentially be over with our audit.
And then we can adjust the budget next year to a lot for, a little bit bigger.
We don't know if this would help to, with your community to advertise, you know, if people need to be responsible, you know, if they have cats, you know, or a dog. I don't know what your code space on cats either, you know, they're supposed to be kept. We can't control, a lot of people, like animals, and they don't want them to make a thing, and when they have livers and no livers, we can't, feral, we can't feral because they're not human touch.
I motion we throw $1,000 at it.
No second, Dan.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Sure.
Okay, four one.
So you will send us quarterly?
If that's what you find, I will do that.
Sure, that's fine.
I just need to know who's going to be the nominee.
Ivan Moss, MHAH.
Okay, Andy's the one that made the motion.
You can send it here, actually.
And if we, I guess, the other thing that's bad is, Troy, and the fund could be, newspapers about all sorts, but we would get people who need help as well, like Tony, that would bring the price maybe down too, you know, and especially the people that are needing to pay more, you know, maybe they need to take some responsibility as well, because they're making it happen, they're not, they're immune to it. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just to clarify, I'm motion, so it's up to the thousands through the remainder of this year's budget, you know, we'll re-evaluate next year.
Yes, yes. Number four, investment options.
Yes, Andrea and I did speak with the representatives at the Janesville State Bank, they did get some information back to us. We presented the information from the 4M fund at a previous meeting, and the Janesville State Bank was very, very close to the same interest rates for the 12-month, kind of the shorter term CDs. Andrea, I was going to ask you what the utility board decided to do tonight, and then I'll ask the council if you want us to move forward with.
Yes, the Public Utility Commission, it was directed to move forward with the local bank, because they came in just 0.2%, lower, so to keep those ones local. I will be reporting back to the commission, there was some clarification, just to decide, ask if the bank will require some assets to be put forth depending on how it's structured, because sometimes with FDIC, only a certain amount is covered, and then you have potential for loss of those remaining funds, so just getting that clarification from the bank. But that was the direction from the commission, so.
And I would recommend that the council, you know, fall in sync with the utility commission, just make the process easier and?
Makes the process easier, plus I strongly believe the money should be kept local, or a small community, and I think that's the way it should be done. I would make a motion to move forward with the local bank for investing.
And do you have a dollar amount, or should we get, come back to you, maybe when we have that other information, we can decide then?
Yeah, you guys put together the plan of how you want to do it, but I think we should proceed with the Janesville Bank rather than the out of town funds.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Five zero. New business number one, we have a donation to the library.
We have a $500 donation to the Janesville Public Library. The letter says, please use the enclosed $500 to benefit the Janesville Free Public Library in any way you deem necessary. We have a resolution on tonight's agenda which accepts that donation going towards the library.
Motion to approve resolution 2023-23.
Point of discussion? I'd like to see some of that money put toward the?
Removal of paint?
Toward resolving the issue of the steps, and I believe that's part of why she gave that money, because she was concerned, and this was the individual's concern. I would like to see that part of our resolution, that that money, or some of that, be used to rectify the situation.
Yep.
Thank you.
Then I would, I will agree with that.
Okay, so we have a motion, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion to adjourn.
I'm going, we're going to give Ivan the second that time.
All in favor?
Aye.
7:45.